If we could call the meeting to order and start the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Leakers.
And give us this day our daily bread. Shout out to the best, to the people who stand against us. We design to protect the nation, with the mercy of the Lord. The kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the highest court, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those of you who brought your phone, could you kindly turn it off? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Please mute.
Oh, I turned mine off, thank you. All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second.
移到
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, any discussion? Motion carries. Okay, public comments. Please limit all public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to the council members. If so, please include ten copies of each. So, do we have any public comments?
This is early, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Caught you off-guard.
It was too quick, wasn't it?
Meeting's almost over.
He got her thumbs.
I'm ready. I'm ready. Good morning. First, give my honors to God and thanking Him for the opportunity to be here. Next, honor to Council President Larry Dodd and members of the county council and all those assembled. Good morning. I'm Mary Ashante and I'm president of Wycomica County NAACP. I want to preface what I had to say before I said, so many times when we disagree with elected officials or whatever, it becomes a shouting match or played out in the paper or whatever. That's not my nature. So, I love everybody and intend to treat everybody with respect. So, last, yesterday, on behalf of the NAACP, we sent the county council this letter. And the subject was, well, I'll just start reading the letter. "We do not support the proposed marijuana ordinance by State's Attorney Jamie Dykes and Sheriff Mike Lewis for the following reasons. African-Americans are arrested for violating marijuana possession laws at nearly four times the rate of whites, yet both ethnicities consume marijuana at roughly the same rate." And in each of these incidents, there's a website that you can go to, in reference to Maryland laws and penalties. It can be said that Maryland already have enough laws on the books in reference to Maryland crime and arrests. We gave you a website for that. Marijuana legalization and recreational use. The NAACP was instrumental in marijuana, in the use of marijuana, medical marijuana in Maryland being passed. So, we support medical marijuana as stated in the law, but we do not support recreational use of marijuana. And we do not support passing another ordinance to deal with a law that's in force. And we do, and we believe that there's enough laws on the books to deal with, same as it with alcohol, is enough laws on the book to deal with people smoking pot and marijuana in public. There's nuisance laws. I've talked to many citizens in the county, and they all say there's enough laws on our books to deal with that without putting another law on the book. Maryland, I'm not going to go over the use of the alcohol, but we put that in there And we, finally, there are enough laws to cover nuisance like smoking marijuana in public. Passing this ordinance will create more problems between the law enforcement agencies and people of color. And I've talked to different segments of the community, and they all feel the same way. We urge you to not pass this proposal ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashante. Do we have any more public comments? Yes, if you would, go to the podium, state your name and your address.
Good morning, everybody. Though I don't have any legislation to bring forth, I do understand this is a legislative session, but I do have public comment to bring forth. My name is Ashling Nay. I'm a junior at James M. Bennett, and I currently serve on the Maryland Association of Student Councils. I represent the whole Eastern Shore, and I am the sole delegate from the Eastern Shore in Maryland Student Councils. I've been pushing not only the, our Board of Ed, but also the county as a whole, for a student member of the board. These would include partial voting rights on certain issues, some regards to budgeting, personnel removal, or any other legislation that may be brought forth. Partial voting may not require all of these voting rights, but just some. For example, Montgomery County has a student member of the board. They are allowed full voting rights with the exception to budgeting. This allows for a student voice within the Board of Ed and more representation for students, as there is a severe lack of student representation here on the Eastern Shore and in Wycomica and Salisbury. I've approached my Board of Ed regarding this, and I have not received an answer, but I've been told that my city council can assist in this process and...
You mean county council?
Excuse me, county council can assist in this process. Is there any way that I can, that I can receive your help for this?
Well, we really don't engage in conversation back and forth, but we could have a meeting with you.
I understand that, yes.
Not, I'm not guaranteeing there's anything we can do to assist you, because we're a funding mechanism for the board, but we certainly are here to listen to you.
But, but actually, we do, we do meet with the Board of Ed.
Yes, I'm aware of that, yes.
On a regular basis, so, you know, they will be in front of us here in a, meeting here in a few weeks, and this is certainly something that can be, that can be discussed.
Okay.
And we all do appreciate you stepping up to the plate and serving in your position with, within the school system, but thank you for that.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Wycomica County Council. My name is Tom Bell, and I live in Pittsville. And it was just brought to my attention Sunday in church that they are planning to have a reading at the library in Pittsville with a drag queen. It's what they have said that this was going to be. This was on lots of media types. I, I don't know where this is speared from, and like I said, I've only had the information since Sunday. I'm hoping you guys can shed a little more light on this. What they said they want to do is have one of those people read to the children in our public schools or in our public library. I'm not even sure if it's going to be, they have a library that sets, it's a portable library, like the portable school system, set there on the corner of our school property in Pittsville on Route 346. Parks and Recreation has the softball field behind it, but Wycomica County Board of Education has the field, the gym field and the tennis courts and the areas that this is sitting in. I know our council, every year, gives lots of money to the Board of Education, and most of the time gives them more than what they even ask for. Our Board of Education is very important. We don't realize how lucky we are in this country to have free education before we're able to move on to paid education or have good enough grades to receive scholarships. This, I do not think is fair. I do not think this is morally right to be able to have them there. I also work with several local churches in helping them to get Meals on Wheels set up for elderly people. I'm a director on my church's board in Pittsville. It hurts me to even think that someone is going to even consider having this exposed to small children, Pittsville School and that area. That takes care of the library and the area there are only third grade through seventh grade, which is very pliable, mendable minds. If they wanted to do something like this and they took it to a nursing home, I can imagine how they would be welcomed at a nursing home with people with a little more education and time spent knowing what this actually does to our society. It is an outcast. I know we have to look at things broad and open, but this, for the children of our county, I think is horrible, and I speak for many in our county. I'm just starting to get the ball rolling with this, because I just found about it Sunday, as I said, but I've already contacted an attorney, and I'm going to have a petition done up, and we're going to post that at several places in the town of Pittsville. I'm going to meet with the town manager Wednesday. He's at our town office Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. I don't believe they would be for it. I don't believe the fire department, and we all do our best to support the Board of Education. And if the Board of Education is behind this, they need this brought to their attention also. We do not need this in front of our children. Statistics show that children that attend church at a young age with their parents, or not with their parents, but attend church up until the age of 10 years old, may veer off and go out into the world, but there's a large percentage, sixty-some percent, that come back to church and come back to the Lord. Now, if we have people like this that's sitting in front of them, dressed in their attire that they would wear, I, I don't know how that would manipulate those children's minds when they're like clay, and we do this when they're young, to try to teach them to be good, upstanding citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. And for the record, the library does not fall under the Board of Education. They have their own Board of Directors.
I'm aware of that, but their library sits on Wycomica County Board, School Board property, not on their own property like this does. It's sitting on the school board property.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Are there any more public comments?
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Deirdre Kenny Nay. I am a parent of two juniors at Bennett High School. One is my daughter, Ashling. And I have concerns about student safety. I will be brief. I would recommend going forward that we, I will recommend that Wycomica County implement a random drug testing for teachers in light of recent actions and events in the county. That's number one. Secondly, my other concern is, students here deserve the, the best education. Every student deserves that. We have too many, and one is too many, teachers that are not certified in the subject of their teaching. It's evident with the pupils, they can see it, they're trying to figure out themselves how to solve problems, because the teachers don't know. So, certified teachers, we must have. And secondly, I strongly recommend random drug testing on teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments? Okay, council comments.
I would, I would like to address, I appreciate the comments that were brought forward. You're a junior, Ashley?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I couldn't have spoken in, in public when I was a junior, trust me. But you did a very good job. I, I believe there was at one time an ex-officio member on the Board of Education, but I, I recognize that you're looking for a little more, and I think, yes, as Councilman McCain said, we can certainly bring that up when we meet at our next quarterly meeting with the Board of Education, to see if they can move forward on that. I would also like, and I appreciate your comments as well, in reference to the three topics you discussed. We, we do hear those frequently. The first time I've heard about teacher drug testing, but again, I think you make some good points, and we'll bring those, those matters up to the Board of Education when we meet with them. Mr. Bell, in reference to your comments, I really appreciate you coming forward. You're not the only individual that's concerned in Wycomica County about the, this, the group of drag queens, which is actually a politically correct phrase. I didn't know that terminology could be used, but I'm assured it is okay to say that. The request was made evidently by an outside group of the library, that the drag queens be allowed to read at the library. Of course, this raised a lot of concerns. I've gotten several emails. I know that Councilman Joe Holloway has also received a lot of emails as well. Over the weekend, I did talk to Director Ashley Teagle, and she stated that it was a discussion that was held among the board, I believe, of the library. It may have been an issue that was on their agenda, but they decided at this point in time not to do that in Pittsville, okay? She just felt that it may not be, this may not be the right thing to do at this time. They were trying to coordinate efforts with what I believe is Salisbury's representation of Pride Month, and they were trying to see how the library could coordinate some efforts with the city of Salisbury. Now, however it got to, from Salisbury to Pittsville, I'm not sure, but that's what had come up. That had been the request. She had stated that it was going to be sort of a situation where there would be a room, a separate room, where the readings would take place, and parents could bring their, their children there if they wanted to participate. It wasn't as if it was going to be something that was in the lobby of the library that might, you know, maybe upset the public in general, if, you know, as it could. So, however it might be, she, concerns were expressed to me as well about the impressionable children being exposed to that environment. This is just the emails that I received, and I'm sure Councilman Holloway received as well. So, as it is for now, it has been, I would say, I wouldn't say postponed, I would say canceled in the Pittsville area. Where it goes from here, I think if you were to address that directly with Director Teagle, she would be glad to engage in that discussion with you. She's a very open-minded individual, and, and I think she's doing a great job for our library, okay? Thanks for speaking today.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Josh? Nicole?
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I appreciate you coming and sharing the, the concerns of the citizens in your, in your district. I, it's good to hear what, what the people are thinking, so I appreciate you doing that. Ms. Nay and Ms. Nay, I, I echo what Councilman Cannon said. In eleventh grade, I would have been terrified to stand up here and speak, so thank you, I appreciate it. I have received several emails on the random drug testing for teachers. I was unaware they were not drug tested. I know our prison guards, groundskeepers, anything on county property are randomly drug tested, so I was, I was surprised to hear that. But I think that, I think that is something we can address at our, at our meeting with the Board of Education. Last thing is Thursday, Maryland Food Bank will be having their mobile market, which is a healthy food, food alternative for the food bank promoting National Nutrition Month coming up in March. So, hope to see one there.
Ernie?
I've got a couple of things. I had a conversation with the library director this morning also. We've been playing phone tag for a few days, but that's, whatever they want to call it, drag queen, this thing's going to go on at the Salisbury Library. They are going to put it on there, she said. Can you hear me, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm a little working here this year.
That's fine. Anyway, I told her I was disappointed, but anyway, she said it was going to go on in Salisbury. So, you know, the citizens can contact the library or the Board of Directors if they have concerns. I know I've been contacted by numerous people in the past few days about this. So, I would suggest anybody that has concerns, she said she was requested by the citizens to have this, so if there's enough citizens that don't want to have it, maybe if they call and request it not, not to happen, it won't. So, the other things, I have a town hall meeting tonight at Mount Herman Church Community Hall at 7:00 PM concerning the closing of the road, Wallston Switch Road. Mr. Weston Young, I believe is going to be there with us, shaking his head, yeah, thank you, Weston, for coming. There's been a lot of concerns in that neighborhood about the closing of Wallston Switch Road, and I think maybe, you know, get some of those concerns satisfied tonight, get the citizens a chance to ask questions and, you know, get better information. And if there's anything else anybody wants to bring up while the meeting's taking place, they'd be welcome to do that also. So, that's at seven o'clock tonight at Mount Herman Church Community Hall. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Mr. Bell, thank you for going to the podium. There's a lot of things that we can't do, but our podium is always there for you to vent and to express your thoughts and your concerns, and thank you, Ashley, and your mother. You did make some good points. When I was in public safety, we, we were required to do drug testing, but right now it's typically set up for people that are involved in issues involving public safety or life safety, so, but that's a good idea, but thank you, Mr. Ashante, thank you very much. And Mr. Cannon, thank you for handling the meeting last week. I've been out on a mission and struggling to get through it, so we're going to get through with this today. Any more comments?
Joe, I didn't know if Joe, Joe, did you have free beer at your meeting? I wasn't sure.
We're going to be on sacred ground, Bob, John. We can't drink.
It's a church.
We might have some wine.
Probably, probably have better attend, we'd probably have better attendance if we had beer there, anyway.
Yeah, wine on sacred ground.
Okay, we're going to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by closed work session pursuant to General Provision, Provisions Article, Section 3-305, B1, 7, and 8 as follows: "To consult with legal counsel, to protect the attorney-client privilege, to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation, to protect the county's legal position, and to discuss personnel at the State Attorney's Office." Do you have a motion?
移到
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 移到 So moved. Do we know where they are?
I, you're talking about Mr. McDermott? They're on the agenda for after lunch.
Okay, I thought, she told me yesterday she was going to be here at 10, but that's, but that's fine. We'll go into open work session this time. Mr. Baker?
Good morning. Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. So, I was asked to come up and give a, an update on MS4 progress so far, which is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. Basically, this is a, a new permit for the county, not necessarily new for our area. Salisbury's had one, there's been several counties over on the western shore that have had them as well. And what it does is it covers the treatment of storm water off of impervious areas before it enters into the, into the rivers and bay, basically environmental cleanup efforts, and also some public education and outreach. So, let me get into this. The, I believe we're working off of something that was given out last year, Table 1, which gave the year-one development guidelines for what needed to be completed, which included developing impervious area baseline assessment, which is, in a nutshell, figuring out how much impervious area we have in the county, how much we have to treat. The permit says we have to treat 20%. Then, developing a restoration plan for that area, assessing opportunities and timelines for implementing water quality, best management practices, assessing opportunities to develop partnerships with other national pollution discharge elimination system permities, and then finally determining funding needs and developing a long-term budget. So, I'm going to start with the, the, the first one, which is the baseline assessment. That has been completed, and by the way, all of this information was submitted to MDE back in October, which is when we have to submit our annual report. The reporting years for these permits go follow our fiscal year, so July 1 to June 30. So, the information that we present in October to MDE is what we did as a county from the previous July to June period.
And Dallas, before we get too far, and when you say the county, does that encompass our municipalities, or do they actually do theirs separate from ours?
No, that, well, I'll, I'll say yes. So, Salisbury has its own separate permit, so does Fruitland. There are other smaller, Delmar is exempt, but then, for some reason, the way MDE drew the boundaries, it reaches out and grabs Hebron, which is included in the county's boundary. So, if you look at the, the, the city boundary, the urban core, you know, you've got the Salisbury boundary, then you go out, if you look at a map, go out like another inch around that boundary, and that's the, in a nutshell, that's the county's urban core. So, there are areas that are contiguous to the Salisbury boundary that are technically in the county but are developed to the density such that MDE lumps them into what we call the county metro core. Now, the nice thing about our permit is, we can do development proj, or do any of these treatment projects anywhere within our county to meet that. So, even though MDE shows an impervious area, say, I'm trying to think, say, like the Bahankin dealerships, or the car dealerships up there on the north end of town, those are technically in the city, or, sorry, those are technically in the county, but we could end up doing a project up in Sharp Town to treat impervious area, and we get credit for that. So, we have a lot more flexibility with our program than someplace like the city that has to only treat within, you know, their, their boundary's finite. We have a much larger boundary. I don't know if I just muddied the waters there or not. So, I did not bring my glasses.
So, this would not be like Sharp Town?
No, no, Sharp Town's not included, although we can do projects in Sharp Town. Now, we are going to do projects in Sharp Town, and I forgot to bring my reading glasses, so I apologize. So, the total impervious acreage we have in the county is 3,400 acres. We have, we can subtract out any projects that were completed between 2002 and 2006, which leaves us with an untreated acreage of 3,339 acres of impervious area that we have to treat. Of that, or, I'll say, that's our gross number. Now, we have to treat 20% of that, which leads down to 667 acres that we have to do projects to treat or remove for impervious. Of that, we have so far done 88.996, call it 89 acres worth of projects to, to treat, and we have another 207 acres on the books. That's just from the first year of, of projects we've identified. The, the list we are currently working off of was just a very, shot in the dark. We are always going back and revisiting projects. There are, we're actively looking for projects that treat not only for this impervious area, but also that treat for flooding. So, we can go in and combine the two and type, find some type of way for flood reduction and to treat for impervious area. So, to speak to that a little bit, we have two projects that are currently on the books. One of them is in Sharp Town on State Street. It's going to treat roughly 20 acres of impervious acre, area, and it will also help reduce flooding on State Street by increasing a, a, a small diameter pipe under the road, so that we're, we're kind of needing, getting a double, double bang for our buck on that project. Another project that's on the books right now is the Hunter's Another project that's on the books right now is the Hunter's Mill Stormwater Pond enlargement, which will treat roughly 40 acres of impervious area. As you know, Hunter's Mill Stormwater Pond is the one that's directly upstream of Pratt Road and the flooding we saw there, so this will help reduce the flooding on Pratt Road and provide us our, our, you know, the treatment areas we need. The nice thing about those two projects, those two will give us 10 percent of the area that we've needed, additional 10 percent of the area that we've needed to meet. So again, we're looking for large-scale projects that give us our bang for our buck.
Question to us?
Yes.
That particular project, normally, I guess, when projects are presented and developments are built, part of that comes to the cost to the contractor or to the developer, per se. I know that after a certain period of time, those projects are then turned over to the county, I mean, the roads are at least, but would that pond not be the responsibility of that development as opposed to the county?
Yes, you're absolutely right. That pond is the responsibility of Hunter's Mill HOA, but it was built at a time prior to the current stormwater reg. So what we have the nice benefit of doing is going in there, making some minor, well, not minor, because of the flooding issue, we're doing a little bit more excavating than we would do for just the water quality, but we can go in, retrofit these existing ponds, and then they still are the responsibility of the HOA to maintain. We've just updated them to today's standards, and then we can claim credit for treating the water quality without having to put something else on the county's books of having to maintain. So to give you a comparison, so one of the projects we're looking at is stormwater improvements out there to the Civic Center and also over to the Shorebirds. Those are county properties. When we go in there and do any improvements, those projects are going to be ours to maintain after they're constructed. The nice thing with going into these older communities and retrofitting their BNP's, we sit down with the HOAs, and I've met with them, and said, for Hunter's Mill, and said, hey, look, here's what we're proposing. Are you guys good with this? And you understand that when we're done, it's gonna be yours to maintain, and they are all fine with maintaining it. And the nice thing also with Hunter's Mill is that they do have a very active HOA. Some of the folks out there have been some of the most engaging as far as trying to do what they have to do to keep their drainage infrastructure up to date and maintained.
Have you had the chance to work with planning zoning to see whether or not their standards are going to change now, so that any future project that might be built, which is limited at this point in time, but that any future projects might represent the same degree of change in volume that's needed?
So anything that comes in now meets current stormwater regs. What we're doing is by like, with the Hunter's Mill example, where they were built, I wanna say back in the 80s, maybe early 90s, they didn't meet the regs that came out back in 2006. So stuff that comes out and is built now already meets that, so we don't get to claim credit for it, because they're doing what they're supposed to do already. We're going in and finding places that were older, and then we're bringing them up to today's standards.
The only other question I have, is this part of the 200,000 WIP program, funds that we have?
Yes, they're intermingled. You can do MS4 projects and get WIP credit. However, if you do WIP, you can do WIP projects that do not get MS4 credit. I believe they are trying to work on with our Phase 3 WIP permit, such that MS4 and WIP will be the same thing, but we haven't gotten that new permit yet.
Thanks.
Mr. Baker, do you have any projects, future projects on your radar screen? You mentioned large projects.
Yeah, so again, right now, we're actively working on the Sharp Town State Street project. We're working on the Hunter's Mill project. We also can claim credit for the swales that treat our roadside ditches. There is a third-party organization that comes in and surveys and looks at the condition of our swales, and then provides a third-party verification letter saying, yes, these swales can be claimed credit for. So it's actually something where somebody just goes out and looks at what we have, and then verifies to MDE that our swales meet stormwater credit. So we don't actually even do anything, and we just get credit for treating these impervious areas. Now, the state won't let us do it, they're not gonna let us verify to ourselves, so we are doing this. But it's a low-cost initiative that can get us a lot of bang for the buck. Same thing for tree planting. So you've got all the trees we just planted out there on Brick Hill Road a couple of years ago. Tree planting is a very low-cost way to get MS4 credit, so we're looking at double dipping on that. We've got places like the Pirate's Wharf project where they're proposing a lot of tree planting. We can claim credit for that. We planted some trees out there to San Domingo when they remove the old community center. That's a project that we can claim credit for. As far as large-scale impervious area projects, we're looking at, as I mentioned, the Civic Center, Shorebirds, and also possibly Warwick, because they are large impervious surfaces that the county has easy access to. We don't have to go through private rights and stuff like that, such as what we had to do with Hunter's Mill. So that's the meat and potatoes of it. There's also what they call the minimum control measures, which basically amounts to what I'll call public participation and outreach. I'm gonna hand out some flyers. These are all available on the county website, things that we've developed to, you know, again, educate the public. The, also, our, the annual report we submitted to MDE is available on the county's website. If you go to Public Works Engineering, there's a tab over on the left-hand side for MS4. We've worked with, on that tagline of partnering with other NPDS permit holders. Let me hand these up as well. We've developed brochures that we're handing out. Again, and we're distributing these throughout the county. I've only got one of these, but one of them is, you might have seen them around the city. It's a tag that we basically go out and put on the storm drains that identify county storm drains. It's just a reminder, hey, don't go dumping oil. They say only rain down the drain is the tagline. So one of the ways that we do community outreach is we partner with SU or other organizations, give them a map of local subdivisions, and say, here's some storm drains. They go out and basically epoxy those to the storm drains and everything.
How often do our county crews go out and try to clean up these drains? Because driving around, I notice that a lot.
Right after it rains, there's a lot of debris.
Yeah.
And sometimes garbage.
So whenever, the day before it rains, and typically while it's raining, that's what we usually do over at Rhodes. So we send out crews, yeah, we send crews out. And additionally, separately, we have litter crews. That, you know, that, the litter crew stuff doesn't really count too much towards the MS4, but we do have the two street sweepers that run out to, run out to the county. We count the, we get MS4 credit for the miles of road that we sweep. We also get credit for the tons of debris that we take off the street via the street sweepers. We started tracking at the beginning of last year, which was, you know, July 1, so come June 30, we'll have a number for to plug in there about how much credit we can claim.
For that?
Yeah. So, let's see, what else we've got? We've covered the brochures, we've covered the decals. Partnering with other organizations, the Nanico Watershed Alliance did some cleanup down on Roaring Point as part of their Cloister Coastal cleanup efforts. We've got pictures from those that we'll be putting on the website. Our illicit discharge detection and elimination system is currently working its way through the county. This information's a little bit dated, because we haven't gotten an invoice from them recently, but our last invoice back in October showed that they completed about 20 percent of the required inspections for this year. They can't go out within 48 hours of a rain event to inspect the storm drain. They're looking for dry weather flows, so you'll probably see more progress towards that in the late spring and into the June time period. But when they can come out, they have been. Let's see, most of the legislation that we needed has already been enacted. We had, from back in 2015, our erosion and sediment control compliance. We also have our stormwater inspectors going out. We're getting some of our folks certified in responsible personnel certification, which is just making them basically stability inspectors and stormwater inspectors, so that they know what to look for when they go to a construction site, making sure silt fences up and that kind of thing. That typically falls under MDE's purview, actually does fall under their purview, but the MS4 permit just likes us to have folks trained up. That way, if we see something, we can say something. And then lastly, we are updating our stormwater pollution prevention plans for the three facilities in the county that require it, which is the airport roads and for solid waste. We're currently updating the roads, it's called SWIP for short, which is basically just making sure that, think, good housekeeping procedures to make sure that, you know, if you have an oil drum, it's on top of a spill-proof pallet. That way, if it tips over, it doesn't make its way into the drain. Making sure things like our salt is stored properly and undercover. It's really just a lot of stuff that we all, kind of already do. I previously mentioned the sweet sweeping tracking that we're keeping track of. So, I mean, overall, we're in good shape, but right now, our main focus is on fleshing out projects to get us to that 667 acres that we have to treat. You know, we're populating that list, then we're looking at dollar figures, and then prioritizing based off of bang for the buck. It is a very, it's an iterative process. As new ideas come forward, some projects might drop off, some projects come on, but again, this year's goal is to make sure we have that list fully populated, and then start fleshing out dollar figures and what we need to do to move some of these projects forward.
Any questions?
Dallas, I'd only say that when Weston Young left Public Works and was promoted to his current position, he left a lot of big shoes to fill, and I think you've been doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yeah, not only just with the basic operations, but you've also been faced with a lot of challenges in the last few years, unexpected. And I really appreciate the work that you're doing, just to let you know.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for meeting with the homeowners of Hunter's Mill. I know I sat in on some of the meetings, and you were, you were very accessible to them, and I think them being part of the project has, has really helped.
Yeah.
In making this a seamless process.
Yeah, we're looking for other projects, but the first step for any one time we want to go in and retrofit an existing stormwater pond is community outreach. I'm, you know, not going in and just, thou shalt do this. Try to find folks that are interested in partnering with us.
So thank you.
You mentioned salt. We haven't had the opportunity to use it this year, have we?
Thank God, no. Knock on every wooden surface around here, yeah.
Yeah, well, good.
Yeah.
Taxpayers save money on that, respect.
Yes, yes, and I saved headaches, sorry. Said that out loud.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good work.
Can I grab that little disc back? That's the only one I've got.
Yeah, I handed it up down that way.
Mr. Taylor's got it right there.
I was looking for it.
I used my, that was my demonstration.
That's nice. Okay, now we're gonna discuss the update on state law, on the process to fill the vacancy on a school board. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I guess there's no specific agenda item on this, at least I haven't seen any. My general understanding is we're still working towards the end game of how the state code should be changed, if at all, in regard to the vacancy procedures for members of the school board. Since that involves a change in state law, I would point out that the comment that was made earlier during public comment about a student member of the school board would also require a similar change in this particular chapter of the Maryland Code. And I would point out, I just looked up, she did mention Montgomery County, they do in fact have a student member. There are other counties that do, I don't know how many, but there are others. At least in the case of Montgomery County, she is correct that the student does have certain voting rights. They do not include voting on disciplinary matters for teachers, administrators, and school board staff.
They do not?
They do not, that's exempted. That appears to be the only thing that's exempted.
Okay.
And there's also a pretty elaborate process. They have conventions among the students to decide who the student member's going to be. So it can be complicated. I think some of the other counties, the student member is just simply appointed by the county council or legislative body. So that's a quick comment on that, because if we were gonna amend the code, that could also be done, too.
Right.
And as you probably know, we're not gonna amend the code this year because it's too late for filing. So what we're talking about, the earliest, would be next year. Now, as far as working towards that end game, my thought on that is this. There's been a lot of discussion at the last several meetings about what I'll just kind of generally call the nitty-gritty of how the nominating commission would operate. What would happen if people don't attend meetings? Who would replace them? How that would happen, and things of that nature. My suggestion would be to put as little of that as possible in the state code, for the simple reason that once you have it in there, it's more or less cast in stone, and you have to go through what we're going through now.
Right.
Which will be to eventually go to the General Assembly and try to get the law changed. I think that most, if not all, of those matters that have been discussed by the members, I think they were all members of the commission who have come up and spoke, have been things that could probably be done either by a code amendment by the council, or probably just by the board itself, if they want to adopt their own rules and regulations. So I would suggest, as far as the end game is concerned, leave those off to one side, if you will, to be handled, let's call it locally, rather than in Annapolis, and only concentrate on the things that you absolutely have to do in Annapolis to make changes that you want to make. So with that kind of preface to things, I would say that in terms of preparing any legislation, and this can certainly wait until later for obvious reasons, because it won't be introduced until the next session, but I can go through a punch list of things that I have, of matters that I think if you want to change them, you're gonna have to do it through Maryland Code amendment.
Sure.
The idea, we had talked at one time about eliminating...
Hold on a second.
Before you do that, I mean, do we want to, do we want to do that? I mean, we haven't even seen, I mean, I'd like to see what you got as opposed to reading it to us in a work session.
Well, I can, I can run, I can run through it fairly quickly.
Yeah, he can go through the punch list, and then we can discuss that.
Yeah, if you, if you want to put these things off to one side that I've talked about, because that would take a lot of time to go through that, and I think you'd be much better off to discuss that separately, perhaps have Laura work with the commission members and come up with something.
Right, this is a work session, so we can go through that.
At least right now, I don't know exactly what is wanted by either them or by the council, because it's really not been discussed with that level of finality.
Well, actually, it has. We've discussed this. How many work sessions have we had now?
Four, about a year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've had four different work sessions. We've narrowed it, we keep narrowing it down to literally just two or three items.
Well, when I go back and listen to the things, my head's spinning.
And we kind of keep going back to the beginning.
When I go back and listen to the last meeting, particularly the last one, my head's spinning as to what actually council wants to do. But again, talking about these nitty-gritty things, I think it's much better to handle that off to one side for local action, and not unless something in that is absolutely important to council and you want it as an absolute requirement that can only be altered by changing the state code, with that one exception, then I'd put that off to one side. As an example of what you might want in the code, that if you absolutely want it as a mandatory requirement, would be the number of public hearings, either by the nominating commission or by the council. As far as I know, the state law doesn't require any for either group, but if you want some and it can't be waived, then you want, and right now, there is something in the code.
Is that something we want to discuss?
Well, yeah, that would be a matter. I mean, if you, if the feeling is that, yes, we don't want to not have at least one or two or however many meetings, either this nominating commission, or committee, rather, or the council, absolutely, then it can go in the code. If it's not in the code, you can have any public hearing that you want. Nothing that says you can't have a public hearing if you want one.
Yeah, we've already discussed that, and what we just, I thought we came to a consensus on was that we were looking at having language saying may have... on was that we were looking at having language saying may have up to two, because right now it says you have to have two, so we were saying they may have up to two, and that way you don't necessarily have to do two public hearings, but I know we've talked about that.
Well, an alternative is just to be silent about it and do as many as you want, and if it would so happen you'd want to have three, you could do it. If you say may have up to two, then you have a ceiling of two. So, I mean, there's trade offs to any way you want to do this. To me, the ideal thing is to maintain as much flexibility as you can, because once it's in the state code, your flexibility is pretty much shot unless you word it so that you have some flexibility, and then you're going to get into more statutory language. But, you know, to give you what my punch list would be of things we've discussed, and I think that you want to go along with, and one thing that's up in the air, and I'm not quite sure which way you want to go, is the duration of the appointment to fill the vacancy, whether you want that for the remainder of the term or the way it is now, so that the person, if they're appointed to fill the vacancy early during that four-year term, excuse me, they would have to stand at the interim election, which is the case now, and what will happen this November for the lady that was appointed to fill the vacancy last summer. Do you want to change that? Don't you want to change it? That's one thing. Another thing is what happens if nobody files to run for election? Obviously, if nobody files and nobody's elected, there's going to be a vacancy. Do you want to have that set up so that you can then appoint somebody? Do you want that to go through the nominating commission, or do you just want to simply appoint someone? So that's another, that's another aspect of it. How do you fill that?
And that could very well happen.
Yeah, and that could happen, and it has happened in some counties, I can tell you. Another item we had was what happens if the vacancy occurs very close to the end of the four-year term. We know that the process with the nominating commission is going to require some period of time, probably somewhere minimum of sixty to ninety days for the commission to act and then the council to act. Does it make sense to go through the process if the person's going to be appointed and a week later the term's going to end? So that's another, that's another matter, I think, that is what I would call a state code matter rather than a local matter. So those are things that I think you want to really look at. Another one that I had on the list, and we had talked about several months ago, was what if somebody is running, has declared to run, should they be eligible to fill the vacancy for that duration of that term before the term that they're standing for election? Or should they just be ineligible for that? Because once you appoint somebody who's actually running for the following term, it seems to me like that's almost like a council endorsement of that person, and it would make it very hard for anybody else to challenge them. So those are, I think, four, what I would call state code items. The rest of it, frankly, I think I would, as I say, discuss it and do it locally.
One of the issues I thought was people not showing up to the meetings and them not getting a quorum. Could, was there fourteen people? Wasn't there fourteen?
Right now, there's fourteen, yeah.
Okay. That's a lot of people on a committee, but apparently they weren't getting even enough to make a quorum, so could you do that sort of like what a jury does? Have fourteen members and three alternates, and then they, or four alternates, and then the committee chairman, you know, make his phone calls so they could pick up enough people?
If they want to do that, another way to skin that cat would just be to say, I mean, there's no requirement that they have any quorum. I mean, if you have a committee of fourteen, you don't have any quorum, and five people show up, and the rules are that whoever shows up, it's going to be the quorum, and they can act.
I thought I asked that question at another meeting, and everybody said, oh, no, you got to have a quorum.
Well, I don't think so. There's nothing in the state code that requires, they can do their meetings any way they want to, or any way you want to tell them to do it.
Can they vote without a quorum?
Yeah, I don't think there's, as far as I know, there's no law that says you have to have a quorum.
I thought I brought that up at another meeting, and everybody said, oh, no, you had to have a quorum.
Well, I don't think you do.
But they've mentioned that, but then we asked Mr. Brumley, how many times has that happened? He said, once.
Yeah, yeah.
And he said, then actually the person showed up.
But then, but they made that an issue. I mean, that was one of the issues.
But it obviously wasn't.
I mean, the more, the more people you have, and let's assume you have a quorum, to me, it always works out that you're less likely to have a quorum. If you have five, you're more likely to have at least four, three there, than if you have ten. It just, it just works that way. I know from condo meetings that I've attended in the big condos, it seems like it's harder to get a quorum than in the small condos. That's just life, I guess. But I don't think that there would be necessarily any requirement that they have any number of people there for a quorum.
We've discussed that numerous times. Mr. Hastings?
Since we've been going over this for about a year now, is it, what's the best way to put it to bed? What's the best way to? I think we did have, we did meet with, you know, we did have the school board folks come in, and they did give a couple, you know, a couple of recommendations. I feel like we had a good back and forth there. What's the best way to take it piece by piece, or I don't, however, and just, and get a draft piece put together so that we know what?
There's two things, and as I've suggested, I think I would take and put locally, what I call locally, to be done in one bag, and what needs to be done through the state code that is either necessary. I mean, if you're going to change anything on the commission, number of members, that's going to have to be done through the code. If you're going to change the period of the appointment from the, to the full four-year term from the way it is now, just part of the term, if it's done early in the four-year period, then that's going to have to be a state code change. To take those things and have them in one bag, and then have these, how are we going to replace people if they don't come to meetings? Quorum, if you feel they need to have a quorum, or they do, put that in another bag, and that would just be something that's decided locally, and can be changed locally, and that's the reason for having it local, so you can change it easy, easily, as things develop and you might want to change it, and not have to go back to Annapolis. So that's, to me, that's the answer to your question.
I do have a comment.
Yeah.
I do have a letter ready to go to the county executive asking for his input on the policy aspects of that. If you guys remember, there were several things that they included the county executive's office on, just to get his input, would everybody be in agreeance to send a letter over asking for their input?
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's a good point. I meant to also say that another reason for trying to put this stuff into this local bag is because they have wanted to involve the executive, and the current executive may or may not like it, the next executive may or may not like it, may want to change it. Why go to Annapolis to do that? Have that in your local bag.
All right, go ahead and send it, and Mr. Hastings, you beat me to it, we need to put this to bed. Anything else? All right, moving on. Weston, can you give us an update on the lobbyists and the projects?
Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Good morning, sir.
So to recap on the conversation we've had, we've contracted with state and local advisors to assist us at our interest at the state and federal level. This provides us a permanent presence in Annapolis. Much of his focus has been in support of the airport and the port and associated dredging efforts. For example, fairly recently, he helped coordinate the efforts and testimony on the airplane parts bill. In addition, he's assisted us with our legislative bond bill request, that is additional funding for the Challenger Program, the Field Seven and a Half proposed out at Henry Parker, as well as assisting the library with a replacement of the bookmobile. He attends meetings when we meet with the various secretaries and their staff. You know, fairly recently, we've met with Secretary Brinkley to talk about the governor's budget and some of the priorities we wanted funded to the IAC Director Gurrell regarding public school construction and to get a better understanding of their priorities and funding formulas. He's assisting us with a larger discussion with the state on both addiction and mental health issues, not just in the county, but at our detention center. You know, the data we're getting back in terms of what it costs us medically, the recidivism and, you know, the frequent flyers that, you know, when they're released are back in a short amount of time, and the stress it puts on our medical unit of the detention center. Those are all things we're trying to work with at the state level, and, you know, he's using his existing contacts and relationships, making our time in Annapolis much more efficient. We have a few bills this year that threaten some of our revenue sources, and we're working to counter those, especially in light of Kerwin. And for example, today, just to give an example, he's in Annapolis with Dave Ryan and other economic development directors, and from efforts on the growing drone industry at the airport to potential exports at our port, he's assisting in those efforts. So I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
You say he assisted you in a bond bill, okay, what delegate is he working along with with the bond bill? Because we know they got to come through a delegate.
Sure, so we've been, so his effort, we still work directly with the delegate, or senator in that case, and Delegate Anderton is assisting us with the bookmobile. Senator Carosa is pursuing the bookmobile from the senate angle. We were working with Senator Eckert. Initially, we were proposing trying to get funding to convert the restrooms at the Extension Office to ADA, and Senator Eckert helped find another funding source for that, so we went Field Seven and a Half with Senator Eckert. So, you know, you are correct, these legislative bond requests have to come from the senators or delegates. There's a, it's a competitive process, and we think we've put together competitive packages there.
Weston, what funding requests were submitted to Ben Carden's office in reference to Kim Cradaville's request?
You know, I don't have that in front of me, but when we're dealing with Van Hollen, Carden, or Harris, it's typically airport related, so we'll have to, we can pull that list.
This was a request that was with a February twenty-eighth deadline?
That I don't know. Yeah, I'm not up to date on that, but I'll find out.
Okay. Any more questions? Mr. Holloway?
Yeah. In looking through some past emails, I think there's been some questions about our lobbyist and, you know, when he came to be, I guess, we didn't know about. We had a lobbyist until quite a few months after we had a lobbyist, and reading the scope of services, it says provide a broad range of lobbying and legislative representation services that promote the county within interest before legislative and executive branches of government at state and federal levels. We've never, other than that one day, we've never seen him. You know, so we've never had any emails from him, we've never had any updates on anything he's done, other than what you've done today, and I can't find where he's registered as a lobbyist in the state. He's not on the list as being registered.
I would have to look at the list, but.
You know, I think there were some issues. I, you know, bring up past history, but I think there was issues that day when he announced to the council that we had a lobbyist that we didn't know we had.
Yes, now initiatives that council went forward, like changes to, as discussed in the previous work session, changes to the school board nominating process, like that's something we can task him with to assist us with, I mean, just like working with our delegates, you know, getting the support for those. But I think, I mean, we're tasking him with plenty of stuff with what we have as our full-time efforts in the executive branch.
Is it, is it general practice of the executive branch to pay thirty thousand dollars upfront for services, and is it even legal to do that?
It's not, it's not normal. We don't always do that, but it depends. It depends. Sometimes it's fifty percent now, fifty percent upon completion. That I don't know. That I don't know. Again, we have lots of contracts, you know, I can't name every consultant we have working for us right now, because it's just with all the departments and everything we have going on, it's quite a list. I can get it printed and then dig into what each one of them's doing, but, yes.
I mean, I've looked the list over, I can't find where this gentleman's even listed as a registered lobbyist, and I think he has, I mean, I don't know if his firm is, but I think he has to be listed individually, and I'm just wondering, you know, if we're employing somebody that's.
His firm is registered. Let's check that. His firm is registered. I don't see his name, but his firm is.
Yeah, he's not registered.
Does he have to be registered individually?
I think so.
I don't know those laws, just like I don't know if we have anything that expressly prohibits us from paying upfront. Typically, we'll have, you know, milestones where funding gets provided, or if things are broken into task. One of the harder things to, I'll say conceptualize with a lobbyist, is you don't always have instant results. You pay an engineer for a plan or a design, you know what you're getting in the end. In terms of assisting us with fighting off legislation or getting like the airport bill passed, there's a lot of work behind the scenes coordinating efforts across the state with other entities that we wouldn't have thought to reach out to, to find, say, similar interests. There's a lot of work that goes into that, so it's not as a defined product in the end besides representing us and helping us get our initiatives put forward. I hear your concern.
I think we had the discussion earlier, the thirty thousand dollar payment in upfront was a highly irregular payment, and very questionable as how it's supposed to be done. My concern is, I was talking to one of our representatives in Annapolis yesterday, and they were very surprised because evidently, he made a comment in testimony in Annapolis that he represented the county executive in Wycomica County, he did not represent the county council in Wycomica County. I think maybe there needs to be a clarification on that.
Oh, we can, we can address that. And what he testified on, we had a potential loss of revenue, as it was written, of nearly half a million dollars, and we last minute needed him to go support that, that loss of revenue, like trying to stop that, so I hear what you're saying.
And it was relayed to me that that was not a terribly productive testimony.
It seems to me the things you're putting him to do is things that our legislators should be doing, and just like the thing that you just lost, I think if our legislators had knew about it, they could have followed it better than he could have, because they are the ones that are approving this stuff.
I agree. He supplements the, he supplements our delegation, but in this case, the delegates that were on the committee that he testified before, they wanted somebody from the county to give our standpoint.
I think it's also something that the county council could probably advocate for, but that's just not how our council's set up. I know I'm testifying later next two weeks, but it's.
Hey, Weston, Mr. Holloway mentioned the executive fronting thirty thousand dollars to this firm.
Yes.
How much of that is left? Because you mentioned a lot of things he's doing.
Well, we paid for it all upfront. How long does the contract go? It'll be sometime, yeah, this fall.
So are we beyond the thirty thousand? Have we had to invest more?
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't need to invest more. It's for a year of service.
Does it sound like you were running off a lot of things that he's doing?
Yeah, so as I mentioned previously, you know, I'm confident that we'll have a very positive return on investment for what he's, what he's been doing. Again, our efforts in Annapolis are, you know, we're connected with the right people we need to talk to in a timely manner, and if you talk to some of the delegates that were on the committee of the testimony yesterday, you'll hear that he was beneficial in providing them the information they needed and- in providing them the information they needed in a timely manner.
So is there plans to renew his contract?
We haven't, we haven't spoken about that. Again, we, we think it's a good, we think it's a good effort. And what I would like to do, and I would like council's buy-in on this, you know, when, when we're doing this, but putting together the successes we've had, and showing that, that $30,000 was well spent.
Weston, you didn't ask for our opinion to begin with. I'm not trying to beat up on anybody. Don't, you know, I mean, we, we got some-
Well, again, just touching on Public Works and Wreckin' Parks, we don't come to you with every consultant we're, we're going with. You can't name every engineer that's working on every project. Who designed the Morris Mill Dam?
We're talking about, we're talking about $30,000 expenditure.
Yeah, but it's significantly more for dam design. And, and, you know, you're not directly involved when we go to these contracts. So you're, you're picking one and getting upset that, and, and again, I, I fully understand why. It's been explained, when somebody comes out saying, you know, they are the county's lobbyist, that without communication.
I don't know who was more upset, this council or our other legislators. Because I, I, I mean, th- these folks were blindsided as much as we were. Not only that, I talked to this gentleman a couple of months before, while he, after he'd signed his contract with Wycomico County, he came up and introduced himself, told me his name. He didn't tell me he was our lobbyist. We just, I mean, he made no mention of being a lobbyist for Wycomico County when we had that conversation. And he'd already been hard and paid, supposedly. So it seemed to me, I, I don't know why he stepped forward that day and made those comments, but apparently he thought it was time that the council knew. But it just seemed to me like this was something that was done with the intentions of the council not knowing about it. So-
I think it was surprising that-
And I think we, I think this, it also gives us something to maybe look internally and how we can, as a council and on the executive side, advocate more so in Annapolis for the things that we need.
Sure.
Which is what other counties do.
I mean, other county, the bigger, sorry to interrupt, John. The bigger, the bigger counties, the legislative and executive branches have their own lobbyists. And again, with our full-time efforts, we have enough work to keep them loaded. So, you know, I, I think the smartest thing to do, given our size, is that when you have initiatives, we get in touch and we use him to help the council with their initiatives. If, if we're not able to do that, and it's something that we're not able to help with, then maybe the council needs to get their own lobbyists, like they have their own attorney.
They do. Their delegates and their senators.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes. What surprised me, in all honesty, somewhere I think what Joe was trying to approach. He was hired in June of 2019. Nobody knew he was representing Wycomico County, not even our East and Shore delegation until, what, was it November? That we had the, that we had-
So we had that quarterly-
Or was that December? So that's almost five or six months after this gentleman was hired that no one even knew he existed.
And I met him in March, and he didn't introduce himself as our lobbyist.
But still, we, you know, you have someone that's been employed for six months as a lobbyist, and our East and Shore delegation did not know he existed. So what exactly did we get for the first six months of his service? I think that question needs to be asked.
Ms. Ackley?
Thank you for updating us.
I like your idea, Weston, you know, give us a summation, you know, especially at the end of the session, you know, and we can see what our, what our wins were.
Sure.
Any more comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Hastings?
I would say I'm happy to see the, the air part, aircraft parts and equipment bill is moving. It's good to see. I'm just checking on it. The, the House bill's not moving at all, but Senator Eckert's bill has moved over into the House, so it's going through. That's, that's good progress.
Yes, they're, they're still, they're still working.
We're gonna have any luck on the tax exemption? That just seems to have so much trouble.
Yeah, so that, that's the airport tax bill. Yeah, the, the angles, getting other airports onboard, getting even, you know, the idea of a megachurch pastor that has their own planes signing up in support of this, that control a lot of sway and PG. You know, this is a, I, I'm optimistic, but, you know, the, the tax relief or tax-related bills with Kerwin on the way, they're not, they don't want to cut any revenue sources at the state level either, just, just with the expenses that, I don't know if they fully figured out how they're going to pay for.
I was under the impression that this wasn't really going to be, have any impact whatsoever on the state of Maryland as far as income, and that the, the legislators just don't get that.
Yeah, it, it actually will produce more revenue with jobs, but they're, they're hung up on it. The, the taxes that are played, paid on airplane parts, yeah, it's, it's one of those things. Right now, if we don't have maintenance at our airport, they're not earning anything. If we had one open, they'd be making a sales tax on, on those parts. And like bolts can cost $10,000 to $20,000 individually for, for planes. So you are correct. They would make money if we had a facility. We don't have a facility because of the tax. And all the surrounding states do not have a tax. And with planes, you can jump over the Eastern Shore or any part of Maryland pretty easily and land in an airport in another state to, to not pay 6% or whatever on your $20,000 bolt that needs replacing.
Delaware does have a tax, but it's 0.38%.
Okay.
Mr. Holloway?
I, I've got one more question about the hiring. I know there, there were several people in the room that morning. Was any of our delegation aware that we'd hired a lobbyist?
I would have to talk to each of them individually. It's my understanding, a few of them did know, but it was fairly fresh. It's something that they hadn't known from the start. Again, there's a lot of getting, bringing somebody who isn't, you know, in the thick of things with Wycomico and what our needs are. There was a lot of, we need to get you up to speed on what our priorities are, what issues we've had, what our relationships are with different parts of the state, entities, and, and what we would like to accomplish, and how's the best way to accomplish that. So, so there is a, there is a ramp-up period. But I do believe, you know, maybe two or three of them knew at the time of the legislative breakfast where he announced himself.
Not aware of any, just for the record.
Ms. Ackley?
Where are we with Field Seven and a Half? I know you mentioned that.
I think we're breaking ground. If we haven't started already, we will be soon.
And what, we're gonna have adequate funding for it?
So we have enough for the field. I think it's the sensory playground adjacent to it that we're still funding for. And then there may be amenities to the field that, you know, I, I don't know if the lighting's fully funded or, or not, but-
Dugout.
Yeah, yeah. I think the basics, the dugout, the grass, the fencing is covered. I, I believe to fully build out as it was envisioned, the last estimate I heard was $150,000 to $200,000 was, was needed. With the private donations we've gotten, I don't know where that's changed. That was one of the legislative bond bills that Senator Eckert put forward on our behalf.
And the shorebirds just made a donation today.
Shorebirds, Purdue, Pohanka, variety. Yeah, there's a, there's a Henson Foundation, I believe. There's, there's a, you know, large variety of people contributing to this, and we think it's a good community.
I think we'll accomplish it.
Yep. Yeah, so they are going to start. It's, I, I think the sensory playground adjacent to it, which complements it. I, I don't know if that's fully funded.
Okay. I was, I was wondering if you needed like a letter of support from, from the council for, to move forward, if Senator Eckert has-
Sure.
-other suggestions of something we could pursue.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Is there any more comments? Weston, a few minutes ago, you mentioned you wanted our buy-in, and I agree with that. I think we can accomplish a lot more if we're all on the same page, but we need to work together while it's going on, not after the fact. So we'd appreciate reaching out to us earlier.
Sure.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I think my name's on the next item for-
It is. Discussion on the county seal slash logo, whatever it's called. And the, the reason we are bringing this up, several council members have been seeing different logos. We just saw that seal that Dallas had, and then he had the same logo you had. And then there was like two or three emails that we have right now that has different seals on there. What is the story with that?
So that's a, so at our 150th anniversary, we had a ceremonial logo created. And honestly, I think we, we think it looks nice, and it goes on, you know, the ceremonial logo has gone on certain things. We, we adapted it from a sheriff deputy emblem, but the, the county seal remains unchanged, you know, up there, there, I got it on my jacket. So this was something celebrating the 150th anniversary. And yes, it was on that storm drain seal. I, I noticed that as well.
So how long is it gonna be used?
That's a good question. I don't know, for the foreseeable future.
But doesn't a resolution have to be brought forth when you change the seal?
Um, yeah, the county seal reg, is a, I believe the charter requires, there needs to be approval of a change to the county seal.
So it hasn't been brought before us, but you guys are already using it?
Yeah, I, I guess the, the play on it is it's a, it's a ceremonial logo.
And again, so how long this ceremonial logo will be used? If it's gonna be used forever, then a resolution needs to be brought forth to change it.
So in, in other examples, like Wreckin' Parks has their own logo that represents Wycomico County Wreckin' Parks. You know, you see the, is it two geese flying?
But this logo's been used on a lot of things, like county vehicles and so forth. So we're getting the impression that the logo's been changed. If it's a ceremonial thing, the anniversary is over with. So you should be going back to the regular seal, or resolution should be brought forth to change it.
Yeah. And then there is a spin-off of the ceremonial seal without the dates on it. That's like one of three that we've seen recently. And it is in the charter. If, if there's a change to it, it has to be brought before the council.
Correct.
What was the cost of all this operation of doing all these seal changes and printing? And, I mean, there had to be some cost involved?
Uh, once, once the, and again, we, we used a pre-made image from the sheriff deputies. It's, when a seal needs replacing on a car, you know, they, they're typically stickers. Sometimes they're magnets. You know, those, the images fade over time. So it would be the, pretty much the exact same price as whatever the original sticker was. You know, we, we just provide an image file to whoever's making the printing. And I don't think there's a cost change with additional colors or, but-
I think the question was, how long do you plan on using the ceremonial seal?
I'd say for the foreseeable future.
Say that again?
For the foreseeable future.
What does that mean?
Going forward, the intention is to still use that, that logo for now.
Without changing the resolution. So again, we're putting a car before the horse again, where you can do what you want without going through proper channels.
Well, I think, to be clear, this is, there's two differences between a logo, a temporary image, and then the actual, the actual seal itself. The seal would be in schools and in, you know, properly adopted. Currently, actually, the seal is inside of a, a, another image. I think it, when it comes to the issues that our council is facing, or the county's facing, this is about as low on the bar as it gets. But nonetheless, if it's, you know, if it's worth talking about, like, okay, but otherwise, I'd say move on, you know.
And the definition of a seal and the logo is pretty much the same?
No, a seal's official image of a particular, or-
Depends on how you interpret that.
Council's, you know, for like an official body, they have a seal or a flag of a seal. But for a logo, I was a marketing major, for a logo, you're, it's just an image. So-
Ms. Ackley, do you have a question?
I just, I was wondering, when, when was the 100th anniversary?
Two years ago.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Okay, I'm sorry.
2017.
Yeah, 2017.
150, okay.
Yeah, 150, sorry.
I think just the concern is the fact that this logo is replacing the county seal in numerous instances. And it's, it's not a big deal, but there's no doubt it leads to confusion. Someone comes into Wycomico County, they're wondering what seal represents our county and which doesn't. I can go to, I can go to Washington County, I can go to any other county in the state of Maryland, and they all have one consistent seal that represents that body of government. We do not. And the anniversary was three years ago, so.
Yeah, 2017. Yeah, and the question was, there are a lot of the ceremonial seals popping up on some of our county vehicles, and it goes back to Mr. Cannon's question. So, okay, anymore? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Weston.
Thank you.
Ms. Harley, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. So I guess motion to go in the closed session?
So move.
You got the second? You got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.